Good evening and welcome to the Monday, October 8th, Issaquah City Council Committee Work Session. Council Deputy President Batiste and Council Member Winterstein are excused and we are going to have three items this evening. We're going to start with ID 0340 Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. Then there's going to be a slight change in the agenda. We're going to go to ID 0349 Eastside Fire and Rescue Budget Overview and we're going to end the evening with ID 0334, the Arch parody update. And so, we will be offering audience comment between each of the three items if you are so inclined. And with that, we're going to start off with ID 0340 Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank and I am going to start with City Administrator Moon.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm pleased to help introduce this item tonight. The Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank is here to give a presentation about their growing service needs and their desire to operate out of an expanded facility. Currently, they operate out of a city-owned building and that's why they're speaking to you first. One of the options that they have explored is to replace the existing structure with a larger structure in order to meet their service needs and they'll explain that proposal to you. Tonight, however, in addition to just sharing that information, we're hoping to gather any questions that you might have so that we can help you as representatives, as property owner, help determine how we want to handle this proposal. So, I've laid out some possible ways that you could analyze this issue. We're just hoping that this is the initial conversation where you get dialogue going, generate some questions for us that we can help answer and also help us understand how you might want to continue the conversation. So, is there a preferred path in terms of discussing this with council members? So, committee, structure, keeping it with the whole body, et cetera. So with that, I'll throw it over to Cory. Cory Walters, Executive Director of the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank.
Welcome.
Well, good evening, everyone. I am Cory Walters, Executive Director of the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank and thank you for the opportunity to share more about our organization and our current facility needs. Before I get started, I'd like to introduce my team that is here today. We have Alana Schut. She's our project manager from OAC and Steve Johnson, he's from OAC. Tom Ellers is our Board Chair and Jim Merrill is our Facility Committee Chair and John Rittenhouse is the Food Bank Special Project Manager. So, as Emily said, we're hoping to have an open dialogue, so interrupt me anytime, ask questions, provide comments. I would really appreciate that. If you haven't been down to the food bank recently, I'd encourage you to come down for a tour. I'd love to show you around when we're open and the facility is busy and active because you really can get a good understanding for what we do at the food bank but also for what some of our constraints are when you're down there seeing us in action. The mission of the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank is to meet our community members' basic needs and help promote self-sufficiency. And I'm going to share... Okay. I already did that. So, currently, we're in a city building at 179 First Avenue Southeast and our building is 5,250 square feet. And we believe that in order to conduct our current services and to meet the growing community needs efficiently and effectively and safely, we need to possibly triple our current space. And we're proposing that we replace our existing building with a three-story building on the same footprint. And we're asking the City Council today just to hear our ideas and to consider some different ways that we might be able to work together to bring something really special and super needed in our community. So, tonight, I'm going to share a little bit more about who we are and what we do. I'd like to identify what our current needs are and what some opportunities for growth are for our organization. I'd like to explain what we would do if we had an expanded facility and we're going to kind of share a little bit more about how we landed on this particular idea versus other ideas. So, to start with, who do we serve? I don't want to assume that everybody knows everything about the food bank, so some of this might be repetitive to you, but we serve the entire Issaquah School District and our food bank alone, just our food bank services, serves 100 families almost every time that we're open during our service hours. That's about 1,200 different individuals every week and we're providing over 4,000 transactions a month. And last year, we provided over 50,000 bags of groceries to our community members. Thirty percent of the people we serve are senior citizens and 30% of the people we serve are children, so we're serving our most vulnerable populations at a higher rate. A lot of the people we serve are living on fixed incomes in our community, although many of our households have one or two incomes in their household. A lot of the people that we serve have disabilities. That is who we serve... Sorry, I missed that slide. So, the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, I feel like we do a great job bringing the community together to serve people in need in a variety of ways. We have over 250 volunteers every week that provide 1,800 volunteer hours a month for our community. And in our current building, we have a grocery store. We have a Groceries to Go program where we deliver food to homebound citizens and to people who have severe transportation barriers. We have a clothing bank. We have a case management program where we work one-on-one with families and individuals. We help people get connected with resources and referrals in our community and work closely with partner agencies. And our case management program requires private confidential space. We have several feeding programs for children and we often have partner agencies in our lobby providing extra resources and services to the families who walk through our doors. So, the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank has been working for a long time on trying to identify what the true needs are in our community. And before I dive into that too deeply, I want to explain what food insecurity means so that we're all using the same definition. Food insecurity is when a household has to make trade-offs on important basic needs such as housing and medical bills versus purchasing nutritional adequate foods for their home. So, this model here represents what we believe to be our current landscape. So, the orange outer circle is the Issaquah School District, the population of the Issaquah School District, and the blue circle are current food bank clients. So, last year, that's the number of people we serve just in our food bank. That doesn't include any clothing bank clients or any special programs. The yellow circle is the number of people in our community living below the poverty line and the gray circle represents the number of people living below the poverty... who are not living below the poverty line but may not have enough resources in their household to keep them from being food insecure. Does that make... Is that pretty clear? So, our goal at the food bank is to grow that blue circle so that it expands into the gray circle. So, anybody in our community who may have needs that we're able to step in and help them before they get into a situation that is critical or kind of starts to spiral out of control. And 100... We're currently at 100% capacity and as you can see, we're only serving one out of five people in need in our service area. So, our concern is what's going to happen in our community as the population grows. What's again... What is this going to look like when we're only... Because of our space constraints, we're only able to serve one out of six or one eight out of eight individuals in need. So, the number of people that we serve and the number of people that need services directly impact our space needs and our operational needs.
Cory, I have a question.
Yeah.
How has tho... How have those numbers in terms of the minimum obtainable service market and maximum obtainable service market, how have those changed over time and as a fraction of the population? And what does that tell us about how the future looks?
Right. What I can say is we used Issaquah Community Needs Assessment and some Amish Community Needs Assessment and Feeding America data and U.S. Census data. It kind of... We kind of melded all of those pieces together to come up with this chart and this is new. So, we don't have this chart from years in the past, but what I can say is the Issaquah Community Needs Assessment has stated that the, you know, the area median income, let's see, the cost of housing has really priced people out of our community. So, this, the gray circle, has really grown in recent years based on the affordability of our community. And if I think back, the housing rental rates in the case... In the Issaquah Community Needs Assessment stated that housing rates have like gone up like $200 a month or something, $300 a month in the last just couple of years. So, small changes in housing costs are what put people in need of additional services. So, and I can get... Tola, we can... I can pull up those specifics, but I think it's definitely in the last three years has gotten harder and harder for people in our community.
Okay. I was just more wondering if it's... If the relative need has been pretty constant or has been getting a little better, has been getting a little bit worse, you know, as the population has grown?
Has grown. I think it's... I think the need has gotten a little bit worse. So, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in our specific... With some specific programs. So, the food bank has seen a slow increase in our food bank service numbers, but where we've really seen a huge increase is in our special programs. And we've developed special programs over time because we recognize it's hard for families and individuals to come into our food bank to access services for a variety of reasons: pride, accessibility, schedule, all kinds of things. So, we've started developing programs where we're actually going out into the community and I'll share definitely some more about that in the next... A future slide here.
Thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions? So, for the sake of time, this slide is kind of similar to what we were just talking about. I'm going to kind of skip through this, but I wanted to let you know since it was in your packets that there's an error on this slide. The three arrows actually should be pointing just to the three bottom levels and not to high food security. Basically, this graph is reiterating that families living on 60% of the area median income could be considered marginally food insecure, low food insecure, or very low So, this is where I'll kind of answer your question, Tola. Our current programs have grown in such high demand that they are severely taxing our current operational needs and making it really, really difficult in our current building to do our work efficiently and sometimes safely. We've worked hard over the past few years to optimize our space as creatively as possible and we feel like we've exhausted every last inch of our building. In recent months, we've moved to an off-site warehouse. We've moved some of our food and some of our warehouse off-site, so it's given us a little bit more wiggle room in our current building, but now we're challenged having operations in two different sites, which is not... Not easy.
Councilmember Ray?
Quick question, Cory.
Yeah.
What is the number on top? What does that represent? Is that number of people served, number of transactions?
It's number of transactions. So, on a daily basis, let's see, so this graph represents our additional programs outside of our food and clothing bank and programs that we started in 2013. And what this is telling us... Oh, sorry. Let me scroll down here. Is that in 2013, we provided 2,161 transactions in that year and in 2017, we provided 9,530 transactions. And that's a 341% growth in just a four-year period of time. So, although the daily operations of the food bank isn't spiking at that same rate, our special program numbers definitely are. And all of these programs that we've created during this time period, which includes summer lunch, tools for school, holiday gift barn, lunch for the break, power packs, dental vans, care kits, and groceries to go, all require space for bringing in product, for sorting and organizing product, and then redistributing product. So, I know these just look like programs, but if you can think of this as like pallets of food at any one given point in time. Does that help?
That's great. Thank you.
So, to be a little bit more specific, let's talk about our Groceries to Go program. This is one of our highly effective, like beneficial, community programs. It also is requiring a lot of space and you can think of Groceries to Go as an Amazon Fresh type program or a Safeway grocery delivery program for clients only. All the products they receive are free from the food bank. Our clients put in a weekly order and they order items that they need and that they will utilize in their households. And then, we have volunteer shoppers who put those groceries together on Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays. And then, on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Fridays, we have a whole separate group of volunteers that deliver those groceries to people's households. We're currently delivering to 70 households every single week and groceries can include canned goods, dairy products, produce, and freezer items such as meat. Most families who are involved with this program or who benefit from this program are senior citizens or people who have disabilities or families with children who have severe transportation barriers.
Cory, are those annual? Is that... Does the x-axis years? And if so, it looks like there's a big uptick last year?
It's kind of cut off there, isn't it? Yes. So, the blue is the historical numbers and we've grown this program an average of 15% every year since we started it. And then, yellow is just kind of what it would look... We project that this program will continue growing 15% every year. If we had more facility space, we def... We think that there's even more of a need than that.
Do you know why you had untypical growth last year? It almost... Looks like it almost doubled in one year.
I think a couple of things. We've accessed some more fun... Additional funding sources. So, all of our programs, we've had an uptick in healthy food options. So, I think that's attracted a lot more people and we've done a little bit more advertising with the partners that we're working with. I also think that the need is growing. Currently, we have... We're kind of plateaued at serving 70 households a week because our space just really won't allow us to support any more growth and so I'll tell you a little bit more about that. So, this slide is to help paint the picture of like what does 70 deliveries a week look For every family we deliver groceries to, we assume there's an average of three grocery bags that go to that household. So, two of those grocery bags would be dry goods, so rice, canned goods, cereal, stuff like that. And one of those grocery bags would be considered cold goods or refrigerated items, including freezer items. So, on every... On a typical delivery day, we need a spot for 46 dry goods and 23 refrigerator goods. So, if you can picture your refrigerator at home or picture a refrigerator at a grocery store, 23 bags of groceries need to fit into that refrigerator. Our refrigerator can fit just that and that's all we can do and we're doing that delivery three times a week. So, additional storage is needed for just sorting the food and then getting the... Soaring the food overnight and then getting it out the very next day. We're trying to be as strategic as we can with this program so that we can welcome more individuals into it, but they're just small little fixes that we're currently doing for right now. This program needs a significant amount more refrigerator space that we just really don't have any room in our current building to accommodate. The big walk-in refrigerator and freezer that we have is full of stuff for our day-to-day operation, so this requires additional refrigeration outside of kind of typical daily operations. Another project... Program that is highly successful and really needed in our community is our Summer Lunch Program. We've had a big jump in services in Summer Lunch, also because we started being able to offer healthier food options and families really appreciate that. Summer Lunch is a program where we distribute a week's worth of breakfast, lunch, and snack items every single week during the summer months. When we started this program back in 2011, we averaged 75 distribution bags every single week and in 2018, so this last summer, we averaged 300 bags every week. So, we pretty easily could fit 75 bags somewhere in the nooks and crannies of our building in 2011, but 300 bags every single week of the summer has been a real stretch for us. If you go into our building on a Wednesday and see what the space looks like, it takes up all of our shelves, all of the floor in our program room with two or three stacks of bags of groceries on top of each other, making it really difficult to get any other work done in that space. So, our current operations, as I've said, are expeding the space... Exceeding the space that we have, as you can see by this lovely food drive photo that we have up here. Our building worked when we had three employees, 100 volunteers, and brought in an average of 60,000 pounds of food a month. And all we provided in our building was food and clothing, but our organization has been reacting to the needs of our community and stepping out and doing more than just that. And so, today, we have 10 employees, we have 250 volunteers, and we bring in more than 85,000 pounds of groceries, donated groceries and food every single month and we're providing all those additional programs that I've mentioned. So, given the growing need, if we stay as we are today with no expansion, that actually means that in the future, we'll be serving a smaller percentage of the need than we have right now. And so, as our population increases, the use of food bank services is going to increase. And the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank has been working on these space constraints for over eight years. This is a new conversation amongst us and we feel like now is the time to do something really different. We feel like we have a veteran staff. We have a board that... A Board of Directors that's super motivated and supportive. We have a really high degree of trust and a good reputation in our community and we feel like the need is pretty clear. So, what would we do if we had expanded space? This is the exciting part. We would have a loading dock so we could get one of our vehicles in a safe space overnight and easy accessibility into the building. We would expand our warehouse so that we could better manage our inventory and food bank inventory is very complicated as we rely heavily on donations, which change literally every single day. And to kind of help you understand what that looks like, we distribute 400 boxes of cereal every week. If you think about how much space that takes up and that definitely doubles during the summer months because kids love their cereal in the summer. We just have to manage like where that is stored. What's going to happen in three weeks from now if we only have 50 boxes right now? How do we get that food into the building? How do we get it out to people? More space would help with that. As I've shared, we definitely need more refrigerator and freezer space. Our clothing bank is very small right now. We just have a small sorting room and a small space. And we have no storage or inventory space for clothing items. So, with a bigger store, we could easily double or triple the output and offerings that we give our community members. We need multiple private office spaces for case management. Having people come in and share their stories is very sensitive. We are one of the first places that people come into to access services and to have a confidential, quiet, respectful space for them to share their stories is really important. Right now, we have one case management office and it's in the middle of the food bank. So, people have to... If we're open, they have to weave through our food bank, hopefully not trip over a crate, and have a conversation with Rebecca. We envision having shared space with partners in our community. We think that as a community, we can increase efficiency and services to food bank clients if they could access more programs in one common space. And then, like today, we would like... We would envision ourselves using every nook and cranny of a new building and we would utilize a rooftop for a garden so that we can teach our clients how to grow food on their own patios. We'd also grow food for our food bank. So, Alana's going to take it over from here, but does anybody have any questions or comments for me? I feel like I just shared a whole lot of information.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thanks. On the second point, the expanded food warehouse, in August, I got the opportunity to see the warehouse space that was by the Atwork on Juniper.
Yes.
And so, I wondered if you could talk about that and what the plans with that and how that fits into the expansion and your plan for that space as well.
Right. So, that is a temporary fix. We felt like we wanted to start growing our Groceries to Go program before we had all of the perfect space in our current building. So, we wanted to move some stuff offsite so that we had just some more room. We've had... So, we're using that warehouse space. We think that it's probably temporary, a year or two years. So, the vision is to have more of that food back in one common building eventually, but we're using that as a temporary fix because we just couldn't do another holiday season in our current building. And we're hoping all of our food donations go over there. Right now, we're shipping food back and forth as we need it and it's been great. It's not solving all of our space challenges, though.
Other questions right now? Go.
Okay. I'd like to hand it over to Alana. She's just going to share a little bit more about the site feasibility and some construction stuff.
There we go. Thanks, Cory. So, my name's Alana Schut. I'm with OAC. We join the team as a construction management organization that is teamed up with these great folks that are doing all this great work and have a need and we want to kind of look at what best serves the need that they've identified. And so, part of that was, is the current location the best space for the expansion? So, over time and prior even to OAC's involvement, there's been... We've looked at... The team has looked at other city-owned spaces as well as other private and public spaces and ultimately keep coming back to the current location for various reasons. Primarily transportation and accessibility in addition to community acceptance and so their... Their current location is favorable from... And so their, their current location is, is favorable from that, from that perspective. And then, as well as zoning and, and those sorts of needs that are important in a development project. So we've worked really hard and we've got, we're serious about this. We've worked hard and taken the steps even to design a building that would fit within the space that we think is best in the current location. And, and are happy, I'm happy to speak to that current design, or maybe that's best suited for another day, kind of whatever best fits your needs. We know that there's challenges, whether at the current site or a different location. And we're, part of today is to start identifying together what those challenges are, whether they be parking, which I know is a hot topic, or we've also talked internally just about, you know, the surfaces and the zoning as well, different things that we're going to have to work through in any location, but really focusing on the, the current location as the best fit. So we talked a little bit about public transit and community acceptance. Those are what we as site selection have narrowed down to the existing location. And to address a little bit your comment about the warehouse space and how that at-work fits in, it may be that, right now, that's a short-term solution that's required to keep operating at the level that we are. There's a concern over the growing years and the operation increases. Do we hang on to that space? And even into an expansion, is that, is that viable option to, to keep that warehouse space? Ideally, we want to increase the flow and food comes in and is, and out faster so that less storage is required. But that's all part of this. Our, our facility committee is looking at the operations and the, how quickly we can serve growing needs and, and serve more. We've put together, I've put together a schedule, and this is less to kind of stun folks with specific months, but more so to identify what we're looking at in terms of overall duration. So this, we're looking, we're plugging in approximately nine months of permitting for a project like this and 14 months for a construction for the current drawing set. And this is only to help identify that if we were to start today, which we know isn't the case, but if we were to start today, we're years out from meeting the ever-growing needs. So we're just trying to help kind of put a magnifier on that of wanting to, we understand that today is kind of the first step of this process and working together, how do we get to the, and, and finish line? So I think the most important part to kind of close with, Cory's done a great job of introducing us, introducing the need, having the conversation that has been happening in the community for a long time, but kind of formalizing that plan. And this starts with, and Emily introduced it also at the beginning, we're looking to work with you on what are the next steps. We understand that this is your property and the city's property, we're ready to, we've already started growing our project team, we've already started engaging campaign, capital campaign consultants. There will be a successful capital campaign that will need to occur for the construction to happen. And, you know, we're advising, we can't do any of that until we have a, until we have a project. And, and so identifying that we have a project is identifying if the city, just getting a pulse on if, if this location is feasible, from your perspective as the property manager or the property owner, I should say, and entering those kind of lease agreement conversations and things that need to happen before commitments are made. And, and then we can engage, really start fine-tuning design and engaging those sorts of teams. So again, we're serious about this, but we're also sensitive to wanting to really have that conversation and work through challenges together. So identifying some of these next steps is, you've, you've heard the need, and so being prepared to answer more questions about that, create a dialogue, get feedback from you, us to kind of understand who we should start flowing questions through, whether it's the council as a whole or if there's specific committees. And not necessarily looking for all the answers today, but these are some of the things that, that we're talking about and wanting to bring to the forefront. And I, I think we know there's a general understanding of the need, and so now wanting to kind of move it to the next level and looking to you guys for what those next steps are.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, no, no, we're getting to some details, but I'll give you some questions to think about a little bit.
Sure.
So we talk about a capital campaign, which you would need, obviously. So what, what size capital campaign and how long do you think that would take if you were going to pursue that?
So we have some, we've, we've consulted and thrown out some ROM pricing for the, rough order of magnitude pricing for the building as designed. Hesitate a little bit to throw dollars out there because we're working on it, but it's, it's a large number. We're somewhere in the, we're somewhere in the $10 million range. And Cory can speak a little bit more to the conversations that we've had with the Ostara Group, who's the, the campaign consultant group.
Yeah.
As far as timing.
Good question, Bill. So we, we started working with Ostara Fundraising Consulting Firm, but even before we started working with Ostara, we knew we were heading in this direction a year ago and hired a development director to help us lay a really good foundation for fundraising for our organization. Ostara and the Food Bank will be going out this month doing donor stakeholder interviews. So we're going to get a better picture on what our donor base thinks that the Food Bank can raise. Do they think this is a good project? Do they think that it's needed? And then from the information we gather from those stakeholder donor interviews, we should have a better idea on timeframe. And this research will also include like what grants we should apply for. Definitely, this is going to take a couple of years, but we should know more for sure, and we can bring that information back to you in November, once we have a good report from, from our deeper dive in our analysis here.
That's fine. Thank you.
And I would add too that that will be phased, so we don't need all of the money upfront to kick the project off. There'd be phases where we get to a milestone to fund design, we get to a milestone to fund start of construction, et cetera. So it's not all at once. It runs concurrently. We're still working on that scheduling and those durations and what those milestones are.
Councilmember Hunt?
So in our memo, there's a question identified, the first one, what does the current zoning allow in this location? I, I'm interested in that, but I think more specifically, I'm interested in what do you anticipate needing as deviations from the current zoning for this, if you, if you do anticipate that? And it sounded like you have a design in mind with at least some specifics.
We do. So currently, we've got some, we've got a height. Jim's, correct me if, pardon?
Height is okay.
Well, and that was just confirmed within the last week or so. Through Emily, we've confirmed that initially, we thought that there was a height, that the proposed construction would be taller than allowed, which is now okay, which is part of where we feel more comfortable in the current space, even with potential changes to the Old Town.
Sub-area?
Area, yes, thank you. Yeah. Outside of that. Yeah, it's just the parking, and then we've got some impermeable surfaces as well.
Councilmember Ramos?
Just follow, maybe Emily, you can talk on that. I know there's been some discussions in some of the committees of, of, you know, limitations of two-story versus three-story in Old Town, and I haven't been up on those conversations last week or so, so maybe you could address where those are now, because this is three-story and I thought was a two-story area.
Yeah, I, I believe it's consistent with where that sub-area plan review is headed, but we'll, we'll know more as they do a little more pre-design work in terms of exact number of feet each of the stories would take. But it looks like it's, where they're headed is consistent with where sub-area plan will, will land. But of course, it hasn't been adopted yet.
Councilmember Ray?
So in the interest of time, you don't even have to answer these questions, but these are ones to take away and ponder.
Okay.
First, since the city owns the land and the current building and the Food Bank, Food and Clothing Bank and your potential donors are going to make a significant investment in it, how do we deal with the ownership of that property and that structure? That's number one for you. Number two is, what happens to the, to operations during the construction period so that we can still continue to do the great work that you guys do? So that's number two. Number three, what's the liability to the city since it's a city building and land during the construction period? And then number four is, given the timeline that you laid out, which has got, you know, best case, we're three years away and there's no question that you have significant need today, is there another way to move forward to meet your needs that doesn't involve a large renovation of the current building and other sites? Stuff to think about.
We're writing that down, Chris. Thank you so much.
And all questions, we've started, we've started conversations about too, so good to know that we're asking the same things.
So, and I realize we, we don't want to go into maybe, probably don't want to go into particular designs today, but if the current building is one story tall and it's about 5,000 square feet, couldn't you just go with the current footprint and go to three stories and have, get the 15,000 square feet that you need? Okay.
Yeah, that's the, that's the proposed plan.
Somehow I thought that there was talk of a larger footprint or something like that.
Same footprint, I mean, a full demo of the existing building.
Right.
For structural reasons and different things. And then, but the same footprint, which is essentially maximized, three, I'm sorry, three stories.
Got it. Okay. Other questions right now?
Councilmember Goodman?
Is there any thought to the Food Bank owning that piece of land? Or is that one of the?
Yeah. I think we're open to having that conversation with the city.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, is there, is that one parcel with building on the same parcel shared by another organization?
Yeah, the historical society owns the building adjacent, separate parcel.
It's a separate parcel.
Yeah.
Looks like we're set from the questions standpoint. City Administrator Moon, did you have something to add?
Just wondering if there are any comments tonight about desired next step.
Sure. So I'll, I'll, I'll ask, since we have both the Chair of Land Ensure and Services and Safety, we're fortunate enough to have both of them here. Is this something that we want to have come back to full council or is this something that we think should come back to one of the committees to chew on? And I'll ask Councilmember Goodman first.
I would, I think I would prefer full council be kept in the loop for a little bit at a point where it seems like it would make more sense to go just to a committee. I don't mean just to a committee, but with three members of the council. Seems like a big, kind of a big topic.
So if I'm hearing right, you'd rather have something, a firm or proposal, plan, draft plan before sending it out to committee, and then the next time it came back, could come back to full council? Is that, am I hearing that right?
Or a work session.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Fair enough, yeah, but seven.
Before we send it off to a committee of three, I think, I think we owe it to the folks involved to let them, you know, bringing the rest of the council members along so that it doesn't go to committee before it's more formed or vetted, so there are no surprises.
Got it.
Or, you know, the bigger chance there won't be any big surprises if it comes back to full council, which would then be the majority.
I'll ask Councilmember Ray, who might be an alternate potential path on this one, if he agrees with that.
I'm okay. It sounds to me like we're, we still got a ton of work to do to get to the path forward. And the only reason, I'm going to actually come up with a third alternative, the only reason I would have a, some subgroup deal with it is so we can move more quickly and have more conversations. So a group of three or two members of the council, and it doesn't even have to be a committee, but it can be an ad hoc group who can, can work with the Food and Clothing Bank to really understand the problem and explore these things, to me, is a much more nimble approach than working within our current committee structure.
All right. Well, I think what, well, I, let's ponder this a little further. Councilmembers Hunter, Ramos, thoughts? I think I.
I think, so usually, we, we do go into a lot of detailed discussion in the committee, and I don't know, at this point, it sounds like it's a bit earlier stage. And so I think I'm, I would be comfortable keeping it at the, at the full council committee level or full council level until it has more detail for us to discuss in the committee.
Yes, I agree with, with Councilmember Goodman, that I think until we get kind of conceptual agreement, that we all could get involved in this. There's a lot, a lot of stuff to do yet, and I think there's a lot of support, but there are a lot of things to work out, so.
Okay.
There'd be a little bit better way, but.
I guess I'm okay, if Councilmember Ray had stomped his feet and said, no, it must come to services, then I, then I would be willing to entertain that. But in the absence of that, I think Councilmember Goodman's suggestion to keep it at the full seven for now until we have something a little bit more specific in mind is, is, sounds like the, the will of the body. Any questions, City Administrator? Is there anything else you're looking from us for this evening on this subject?
No, I think staff will huddle with Food Bank partners and, and talk through sort of what information we might be able to package up and bring back to you, and then we'll need to discuss kind of a timeline for doing that, given that next couple of months are pretty burdened when budget conversations. So we may get creative about how we start to share information.
All right. Anything else from council before we move on to the next ID?
Public comment.
Oh, I'm, thank you very much. I want to offer a public comment if anybody wants three minutes to speak to us on this subject before we move on. You'd be welcome to take that. It's nice having several former council members in the room tonight. It really represents some.
We love telling you what to do, yes. The three-story issue is not on that side. It's in the residential area. We've got a nice big green and space between that already known commercial, restaurant, office area. So I don't see any problem with the three-story at the present location. Keeping the, the process public is good, and I think build confidence and support out there, I think that can happen, especially given that location. And, you know, it's, it seems to work. A little concerned about the expansion of groceries to go. My wife already spends too much time getting the books ready for that, and tripling that is going to be quite a challenge, but we'll work it out. Thanks.
Thank you so much for your comments. Is there anyone else in the public wishing to speak tonight? Anyone else? All right, we will move on. Thank you again, Isikua Food and Clothing Bank for joining us this evening. We will move to ID 0349, Eastside Fire and Rescue Budget Overview with Jeff Clark, Chief of Eastside Fire and Rescue.
I'm knocking me out for your budget.
No quid pro quo on that one.
Chief, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll get this set up and then be right with you. Yep. Turn this up a little bit. All right. Can you hear me okay? All right. First of all, thank you for the invitation to come and speak with you. I'm excited to have this conversation and present the proposed, our first proposed two-year budget to you. From Eastside, as you know, last year, we set in part of our strategic I'm excited to have this conversation and present the proposed, our first proposed two-year budget to you. From Eastside, as you know, last year, we set in part of our strategic plan to set a two-year budget cycle, so we've been successful to date. And actually, on Thursday night, our EFOR board as a whole will be considering the budget. What, as I explained in the memo that I sent out with your packet, what you have in front of you is a conglomeration, a summary of a lot of the presentations we gave. You do not have everything. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, though, as we go through the process here. So first of all, I pulled out the comparisons, let's see, which screen is it? This one? Okay. I pulled out the comparisons that applied it to Issaquah. So first, this is something we do every year now. We compare to our, the comparable areas in King County, Snohomish, and Pierce County of how we're doing as an agency, and it's very difficult to compare apples to apples. What we're looking at is strictly operating budget contributions, okay, for this set of slides. And as you can see, when you look at other types of regional consortiums, okay, they're either RFAs, fire districts, contract cities, or in our case, the only ILA form. From an AV perspective, we're doing good. From cost per capita, in order to break down, AV is one measure, and if you're in a high-value area like we tend to be. Assess valuation. So, I'm sorry, coming up from Arizona, AV was never on the radar. We didn't look at things. When I got up here to Washington, realized everything from a tax perspective is based on assessed valuation. All right? So quickly became, every time I met a new chief from an RFA or something, he'd say, oh, what's your AV? What's your, you know, and I had to become a quick study on what that means. So if we were an RFA or some form like that, our equivalent right now would be 78 cents of AV to operate on the operating budget compared to Snow One, which is the most expensive, which is $2.60.
And Chief, I just want to mention, in case anybody at home might be panicking, that's per thousand assessed value.
That is per thousand, you are correct, sir. And, and what I was saying before, when comparison, I don't like just using AV because AV, if you're in a higher AV area where your assessed valuation is higher, it looks really good, but it doesn't mean the dollar, are the dollars any better, which is really hard to tell. So that's why we look at the next one, which is cost per capita. So per citizen living in our service area, what are we paying when you translate that operating dollars in AV to a cost per capita? And you can see the comparison here. The one thing I'll note, you'll notice on a couple of these metrics, the South King actually comes out a little bit better. Now, South King is the federal way area, way down south. It's a, department is probably about the size of ours, maybe a little bigger, in a higher volume area, and their AV tends to be a little bit lower there. But they got hit tremendously hard in 2009 with the crash that occurred. They did layoffs, and they're in the process of hiring more people. Their fleet is not fully funded, their capital plan is not fully funded, where we're fully funded on both. So, but just so you'll know, there is a difference in demographics when we look at it. This is an important metric to our board. One of the marching orders I received when I first walked through the door was that we be as efficient as possible, and when it comes to full-time employees, equivalent employees, that we keep things as minimal as possible moving forward. And you'll see, we're staying the same, 1.06 per thousand is, is exactly where we were last year, is where we are this year, and with the, with the budget that we're proposing, we're staying the same. And then EFOR in Zone One. Now, Zone One, the fire service is broken into, up into three zones in King County. Zone One is everything that's basically north of I-90 and east of Seattle, okay? So we took those cities and plugged in EFOR on the same metrics that we showed, and then I believe my next slide breaks it down into our partner cities, which are Issaquah, Samamish, and North Bend, breaks it down, so it looks at your operating contribution when it comes to AV compared to all of the other cities in our zone. And our zone from a, from a contribution standpoint is going to be very similar. The AVs are going to be closer to each other than when we compare ourselves to Zone Three, which is South County. So it's, it's a more equivalent view of comparing the services we provide on the operating side. Same thing with FTE per population. You'll see that we, as EFOR leads the zone, this is a, FTE is not practical to break down by our partner cities. It needs to stay at the organizational level. And then when you look at our cost per capita, you can see across the board, and I'll let you read that. Same thing with cost per capita when you look at our three partners, three of our five partners. Yes, sir.
So, and yet, and yet, there's some differences. Any thoughts on why we're 50% higher per capita than Samamish?
The, the biggest reason is you're around 32, 33,000 people, and they're around 62,000 people. You have a much higher call volume here. The demographics in this city compared to Samamish.
Oh, sure.
Just don't match up, and, and they, they can service 62,000 people for some reason with fewer resources than what it takes to service Issaquah. I've spoken Samamish a number of times on it. It's a, it's a strange anomaly for 62,000 people to generate as little as it does from around the country, but that's all I can answer for you.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Good bet. Oops, skipped one there. All right, and then, and this is just a, a quick summary as we could do. We started this one last year. This simply looks at other three-station comparable cities or jurisdictions within our zone, within Zone One, and what they pay for their operating budget only versus what, what Issaquah's management pay. Now, this is all 2018. We wanted to compare apples to apples, so this is our current budget. This does not include what we're proposing, because we don't know what everyone else is proposing as far as moving forward either. But well, you'll get those numbers next year, obviously. And then, this, this was something we started last year as well. This is comparison, comparing our, our annual average increase to our budget, our operating budget, compared to what the city's looking at, your city's comparable budget increase on operating side, what that is amortized over. Now, this is looking at operating budget on the, on the books, and the three cities, that's over six years. I don't know what your proposed stuff is for this year. This includes the two years that we're looking at for EFOR, so this is over eight years for this. So I saw some quizzical looks.
We've averaged 6% annual growth in our operating expenditures over eight years, each of the last eight years.
So technically, for you guys, it's over six, because the last two years of this includes 19 and 20, because I have 19 and 20 data for EFOR, okay? But the next slide, let's see what I have. This is what I have for each of you. When we went over this last year, I had the city managers in the, city managers and/or budget folks in Issaquah, you would have had your budget director in there last year. We showed this slide and explained how, how we got to this. All we did was open up your operating budget, grab the operating number, and we took out some, if there's capital or if there's a transfer in of funds, we took that out and just looked at just year-over-year, your operating piece, okay? And here's what we have, and we, I did not have to update these numbers for this year because 19 and 20 are not published yet. So these are, this is still for you, it's the same numbers I presented last year. All right? And obviously, if there's a, if there's a change in any of this, we'll gladly change it, but it prompted a lot of conversation, which was what it was meant to do in order to compare. Coming in from outside, I wanted to get an idea of what your operating cost increase looked like, and this has to do with where you classify it in your budget at the end.
So I think, I mean, I think one has to be careful with this, because as I think about it, you know, we've continued, like, as a city, Issaquah has grown pretty rapidly over that same timeframe, whereas I don't, I mean, I don't know as a whole if EFOR has grown, you know, if you were to, if you were to put this on a per capita, it might, it might not look so stark.
You might, and, and this was not intended to look stark. I mean, I completely understand your perspective. This was intended, if I'm, if I'm asking for 3.6%, and all three of the cities were down at 1.5% and 2%, I would be doing an internal check saying, we're asking for way too much. All right? When we're at 3.6% and I see that, that our partner cities are in this, this range, it gives me a barometer that, okay, I'm not outside of the ballpark. This is how we started it last year.
Yeah, I mean, the point should almost be like smear off the specific numbers for a second. The point is that you're asking for less than any of the cities involved.
Yes, which just means that we're in, actually, even, even easier than that, the point is, is that for, as the administrator, I'm just not asking for something that's out of the ballpark, okay? And this is a comparison that we showed to the FAC and talked through more in, in more specifics last year. This year, it really didn't, we showed the numbers, but the conversation we didn't dig into.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Good. All right, so now getting into the specific budget for this year, and I'm really sorry that, that Councilmember Winterstein isn't here, because last year, he had some questions that I still remember, so I might bring him up a couple of times just to, just to put it on the record. But first of all, with revenue, our revenue did change a little bit in our projections, and I want to explain just a few key points. I'm not going to go over all of these with you. So first of all, the Snoqualmie tribe. The Snoqualmie tribe, we've actually had a service contract with for a few years now, and you'll see in 2018 that the revenue from the tribe is zeroed out. As far as our budget was concerned, at the board level, we did not count that tribe money as revenue. We did bring it in, and we did set it aside essentially to fund the liability fund and to, which is a, which is a fund that we have, a one-time fund that we have in the budget, but it would, we decided not to count it as revenue. We basically treat it as end fund balance and make sure that our contingency funds are funded before we get into the budget year. This year, however, I'm recommending that, that the tribe money come back into and be counted in our revenue on the budget. That's why you see an increase there. The reason that I'm recommending that is the line, GEMT, the third from the bottom or the top there, that is a new revenue line. There was a state law that passed a couple of years, well, yeah, about two years ago. It's being implemented now. This has to do with Medicaid patients and transports, and it increases our revenue, our ability to collect revenue from the Medicaid system. We've plugged $75,000 in, we hired a consultant this year. We plugged $75,000 for the next two years. We actually think that has potential to be as high as $600,000. Until I see real money coming in, though, I don't want to project that it's actually coming in. So that $600,000 essentially will sit, we're not spending it, it will sit in the ending fund balance. If we get to 19, and we, at the end of 19, we actually collected $600,000, then it will first go to make sure our contingencies are funded properly with, on this budget, January 1st, our contingencies will be 100% funded. In 19, at the end of 19, if they're still 100% funded, the board will have a decision to make with what to do with that revenue. That's not a decision that I or my staff are going to make. We won't have the authority to spend it. And once we know what that real number is, we'll figure out how to budget properly moving forward. And most likely, all that that will do, my recommendation's going to be, if we feel good with the $600,000 number, we'll plug $600,000 in the out years and, and just continue down that path. It also depends on how long that funding stream's going to last. By state law, it's not going to change as far as what we do, but if the feds ever change the way they fund this, and we're only, I think we're the third state to get into this, if all 50 states get into this funding stream, I do not believe the federal government's going to be able to afford to keep paying it. So we'll have to, we'll watch the subject, but that's why you see a difference there. And then there's a note at the bottom. We're currently conducting a pilot study through March for reimbursement of motor vehicle accidents. We are not counting any of that revenue because we have not counted out as a permanent program. We're just parking that again in fund balance, and that will be decided once we decide what we're going to do with the program. We're only expecting up to maybe a quarter million, 250,000 in that, and I don't think we're going to hit that mark by March, but that's the number that's plugged right now. So outside of that, the revenue projections have stayed largely the same as when, and you'll note, this was as presented on July 5th. They have changed, some of the numbers have tweaked a little bit, but largely, it's stayed pretty similar.
Jeff, what happened to AMR?
AMR, that, the AMR contract for all of Zone One, Eastside manages the contract for AMR. In that contract, there is a reimbursement rate to the contract administrator, and that, that right now, that total's 207. They have asked to renegotiate, we started renegotiating with them in March. It's very clear that that funding stream is going to go away, that 207. It has not yet, but by the end of 18, I fully expect it to, so we just wanted to plan for the eventuality that that goes away, rather than hope that we're going to be able to save it. If we're able to save it in negotiations, I know we won't save all of it, we'll, obviously, we'll plug that number in moving forward, but we wanted to plan for the worst-case scenario with that. Frankly, we don't use AMR near as much as we, we used to, and after January, I'm not sure we're going to be, that I'll be recommending that we're the lead agency for negotiating that contract either. I think we probably need to get out of the way of that administration, run our business the way we're running it, and we'll let one of the other entities deal with it.
Thank you.
Any other questions on revenue before I move on?
So, I'll ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Because I've never been on the EFOR board. So how, how do you do it? Like, how do you keep, I mean, these numbers are, tell a really strong story in terms of sort of efficiency of, of your delivery model, like, why is EFOR so much more efficient than all the other? Like, we always, we, we often times compare ourselves to like Redmond, and what's Redmond doing? And we're like, we're just light-years ahead of them in this. I'm going to go brag to Hank next time I see him.
Yeah, please do.
So how does, how does this work?
So, well, I have to, I came in in the middle of this. The first, the first place where credit needs to go is that you had five government, local government entities that decided to get together, and rather than base your organization on a funding stream, like say an RFA or a fire district does, which is a property tax, where they basically get to budget towards, well, this is the amount of money we can collect on property taxes, so let's budget to that number. What you had the foresight to do back in 1999 was put together a inter-local agreement that holds each other accountable, put together a board of directors of the elected officials of those five, and hold the organization accountable. And you set a parameter for efficiency being one of the reasons you move forward, to provide a quality service but be efficient. I think it's because you hold each other accountable. Now, now, I came in two and a half years ago, and as part of the recruitment process, and anybody who's switched jobs understands, you look at a recruitment flyer, and you, you study, and you have conversations, and you make sure that your personality is the right fit for the organization. And frankly, since getting here, I found out that my personality is the right fit for the organization and the staff that we have, and part of what the marching orders I received from the board has been, is that, hey, we want to continue to provide a quality service, but we want to do it as an efficient way possible. When we did these comparisons, I don't think anyone knew where we landed. This is something that, that I brought in, it's something that I used to do in my past. We brought in these comparisons. I didn't expect the comparisons to be this different. When I looked at regional fire authorities, though, specifically, because those of you that have been involved in the board understand that there was a, when I walked through the door, there was a, some contention about a regional fire authority. Regional fire authority bears out that it's the most expensive model you can do. From a city perspective, and Emily, I apologize, but I used to work in a big city, so I get to say this, from a city perspective, it's very hard to hold, to, to be critical of the, of every line item all the way through the budget and hold them accountable, and I'm sure all of you have had that experience as well. Not because there's, there's nobody being mischievous or anything with the budget, but it's such a large animal, and Redmond, you brought up Redmond, so I'll say, I got to believe there's a large, large animal there. Issaquah, I'll guarantee your budget is more complicated than mine. We can probably take, I'm guessing, the 50 to 75 line items that I have. It's pretty easy, as a chief, to scrutinize and hold accountable that number of lines versus the layers upon layers that a city has. And depending on who's been leading the fire department over those years and what their personality is and what their background is, I don't think that they can hold their organization as accountable as I'm able to because of the structure that you put together before I got here. That's my opinion, anyway.
All right, thank you. Other questions right now?
It's too bad you haven't had an opportunity to be on the EFOR board because it's really fun.
Excellent. I will try to change that in the future.
I don't think so.
You two are arm wrestling for it now.
Councilmember Hunt?
I have a quick question on the revenue slide. What are the other sources of non-partner revenue that?
All right, so the EMS levy is in King County EMS, oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, I meant what, what falls into the other category.
Oh, other.
Yeah.
John, help me.
Could you, could you, I'm sorry, could you come up to the microphone? Because people can't hear us on the, at home, the seven people who are watching at home.
Seven?
7,000.
Sorry, 7,000. That's what I meant to say.
Sorry, John Parkinson, Deputy Chief. So the bulk of that's going to come through a few things. It's vehicle contracts with other agencies, cost recovery from fire marshals are the other, is the other large one, but that makes up the bulk of it. So there's odds and ends, which is some money that comes in from school districts in the tens of thousand ranges, but.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks. And we can provide you a breakdown, too. That's, we just try to keep it, keep it easy. Sometimes I keep it too easy, though.
Thanks.
All right, so this, this is a document that we presented on July 5th. One of the things that I try to do to keep it really simple is to just show you the exceptions, okay? So what this is, is an exception report. This is not up to date with what your reps are going to see on Thursday, but it's been are going to see on Thursday, but it's been vetted through four meetings with the FAC. But largely here, here's what you see is in 19, here are the exceptions. Everything that's over $20,000 that we're looking at. This does not reflect if I found, or if the staff found $20,000 of savings somewhere else and we were able to use that for a priority that we didn't have to ask the board for, that's not reflected in here either. This is just what is above what we were asking for and our, and our initiatives. I'm going to go over the major initiatives here towards the end of the presentation. So I, but I just wanted you to see the one-page summary that we speak from in the beginning. And our board did see this as a whole in June when they referred this to the FAC. And then this isn't updated. We just presented this on September 24th, but back in June, the board saw a similar piece based on what our projections were in June. And you'll see, this is 19 and 20 as far as what the proposal that our board is going to consider on Thursday night. And you'll see for Issaquah, it's a six and a half percent proposal. I'm going to get into a smoothing idea that came across and understand that this year, the funding formula changed based on the contract that was negotiated back in 2015. All right. So, and that means there's absolutely nothing from an organizational standpoint that changed, to change these numbers, other than the contract says that we have to redo 15%, which is based on call volume, and 85% of the formula, which is based on assessed valuation. And that changed the actual percentages that each partner play, pays. As far as our final proposal, in 19, it's a 3.63% operating budget increase or, or partner contribution increase. And in 2020, it's a 2.48%. But you'll see based on this, it's 3.63 for the whole agency, but Issaquah sees a six and a half percent increase if it's accepted as it is here. And it's because of the funding formula refresh, not because of anything that we did operationally. This is, this is the latest summary that we landed on when it comes to actual revenue and expense. It's just meant to be the summary to demonstrate the 3.63% and the 2.48% for 19, 2019 and 2020. And you can see the updated revenue projections across the bottom there. All right. So then what I wanted to do was just include a few of our major initiatives so that you understand what the changes are and where we're moving. And again, I hope you'll see at the end that there's a theme here about efficiencies and doing everything we can. One of my first mandates back to staff after we have, we first solicit out to our staff on what potential budget items they need moving forward. Once we assemble those, my executive staff, the three deputy chiefs and myself, we will sit, we'll go through those a little bit. And, and now after, this is my third budget here, it doesn't even come to me before this, this step now. It's basically, they ask everybody, okay, what resources do we have right now to handle the things that you're asking for so that we don't have to go ask the board of directors for something? That's our last option, is to ask for more money. Our first options are to handle things in-house. So first of all, our, our first initiative with, this is outlined in our strategic plan, was getting to a plan, we're in our urban core, as you recall from our standards of response coverage. Samamish and Issaquah are by definition urban areas. They are, they should be getting served. We should be serving them from a fire service perspective with dedicated aid car system. Right now, what happens in our six fire stations that we have in Issaquah and Samamish is that when an aid call comes out, our firefighters come out and they jump in the aid unit and they respond on a, on an aid call. All right? They go back to the station. If another call comes out that's fire-related, then they jump on the fire engine. The problem with that system is when a fire call kicks out and the three closest companies are coming back from an aid call and they're in their aid unit, they can't fight the fire. They have to go all the way back to their station, get their fire engine and move back. The urban benchmark or best practice within the industry is that they're always in their engine and their ladder. One of the things we identified through the strategic plan was in order to accomplish that in the urban area, which is Samamish and Issaquah, those six stations, we need to add a couple of dedicated units, dedicated aid units during a budget process. So that means adding two-person aid units, two of them during the day or during the 12 hours, 8:30 in the morning till 8:30 at night, and one that would be overnight for all 24 hours is what's needed. So you'll see that based on this, and these are all going to sum up together, but based on this, to add one 24-hour unit is $942,000 to meet that benchmark.
Chief, can you explain again for those of us who haven't been lucky enough to be on EFER board yet, what's something that's bigger than sending out an ambulance but smaller than, than sending out a fire engine? Like, is it an aid car or what's it?
Yeah, an aid car is an ambulance, basically. So it's a, it's synonymous with ambulance, actually. Just in the fire service here, we call it an aid car. So it would be an ambulance that's responding with three people on it, the same three people that are on the engine or, or the engine. They just pick one or the other.
So we don't, so forgive me, I've never had to call for an ambulance or anything like that.
Good for you.
They, they don't send ambulances? They send the fire department?
They send the fire department, yeah. They have, the fire department is the first responder. And then if, our ambulance contract is AMR here, if we need to do a transport that we can't facilitate ourselves, then we would call the ambulance company in to perform that. But no, the first response is handled through the fire department in this area and in most areas of the country.
Got it.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very helpful.
So as, as proposed, if we were to add dedicated aid units to our existing system, we would need $942,000 to add every 24-hour unit. Okay? Technically, we need two 24-hour units to serve the Issaquah-Samamish areas. If we did things traditionally, all right? But we really only need two during the peak times, which is 8:30 in the morning to 8:30 at night. So that means we need one and a half, right? A 12-hour unit and a 24-hour unit. So that number for one and a half is going to be somewhere around 1.4, 1.5 million dollars. Just remember that number and I'll come back to it. All right. So that's one of the initiatives that we're achieving with the budget that's proposed currently. And in, this, this is just a visual depiction from our standards of response coverage where it, the, these red marks here are the six fire stations in our urban core.
Did you put it, what are the red dots?
So.
Or the green?
The red, the green dots are dots that we, that we achieve the response time within our response time goal. The red are the areas we don't. And, and the Trossix area and South Cove, those, no matter what we do with our station placement, those two areas are going to stay pretty red. They're just, they're odd configurations to respond to. They're, they're difficult to get in and out of.
And Forest Rim, for those of us who live on Squawk.
Yes. And I'm, I'm one of them too. I don't live that high up, but I'm on Squawk. I'm not sure why this slide is doing this. So another initiative that we had from the strategic plan is our span of control of supervisors. So a battalion chief is a 24-hour response supervisor. And currently, we have one stationed right here in downtown Isquah, Station 71. And 24 hours a day, they're responsible to cover 190 square miles that we have in the EFER area, nine career stations and five volunteer stations. That's a lot for one supervisor to handle. All right? We clearly need a second one, more for space than call volume, but still covering 190 square miles and nine stations plus the volunteer stations is a lot. So we clearly need that. This budget does achieve it. If we were to, if we were to add the 24-hour unit, the, the B C, that's almost $600,000 there.
Can I ask, are there, so when we've, when we've talked about adding officers and to a lesser extent, talking about adding senior officers in the IPD, there's either an ICMA or some other sort of standard that's used to say, we've crossed this threshold. And so when you talk about nine career stations and five volunteer stations, is there, is there an ICMA standard or some other standard that you can use to say, here's, you know, this is sort of the, this is the industry standard. We crossed, we crossed it a while ago. We've been kind of waiting to do this, but we can't wait any longer.
I would say ICMA doesn't, doesn't have a standard per se. They're part of the fire service accreditation process, but for the most part, and I, I agree with this, we don't buy into just a standard because demographics are so different, road configuration and that is so different. I think universally from a management perspective, a span of control of supervising four people, six people at the most, or direct reports is probably the most efficient way to maintain that. And our folks are at one to nine under our current system. That, that's probably the best benchmark I can provide in the context of this request of where we're going. But you're going to find all over the map in the fire service about what, how many B Cs there are versus stations and supervision and square miles and that kind of thing.
Got it. And I ask just, you know, mostly because, you know, fire and police are, are incredibly trained professionals and thus do not come cheaply. So we always want to be very careful.
Oh, no, you do want to be careful. And probably that number I showed you in the beginning in the comparisons with, with FTEs of 1.06 per thousand. Now, what is a common benchmark that I would say the ICMA and I2 probably fight on a regular basis would be they, there likes to be a number of the number of sworn firefighters and they want that to be at one per thousand is kind of the common push for proponents of that kind of a metric. Same thing with PD, they might be a little higher than one. But there's nothing tying to the, the effectiveness or the efficiency of that. It's just saying, oh, we should have one firefighter per thousand, which we don't have. We have 1.06 employees per thousand. But again, I don't buy into that number either. I think everything's dependent on what service you're trying to achieve. And every community is a little different.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So then the budget as proposed, what we're actually doing, this is something that I wanted Councilmember Winterstein to hear because he made a comment last year when we talked about strategic plan and we talked about not having to add people. I said, yes, I'm confident that as we move forward, we can achieve a lot of our goals without having to add new people. So this is a, this is an example of this. What we're doing up in Samamish under this budget is they have a station, which is not on this map. I'm going to show you. So this station 281, which is the one right up here, okay? That station is our least busy, I guess, fire station within the urban core. All right? And it is pretty easy to identify how we could cover our urban core with five fire stations along with two dynamically deployed staff aid units. All right? So what we propose is repurposing Station 81. There's 12 personnel at that station and utilizing those personnel to populate the aid unit, the 24-hour aid unit and the 24-hour B C unit. Okay? Rather than ask for new people. All right? And then the station, the 12-hour aid unit, to take care of the rest of the peak time, we're going to staff, and this is the 540,000, $48,000 ad, we want to staff that 12 hours a day during the peak time. Because during the peak time, 8:30 in the morning to 8:30 at night, we run 66% of our call volume. 33% of our call volume is from 8:30 at night till 8:30 in the morning. Okay? So what we, what we see from there is we can utilize 12 hours of actually overtime. Putting two overtime personnel on there is cheaper than getting what we'd have to hire as a minimum of four full-time employees. It's actually cheaper to staff this with overtime than with new employees, especially over the long run. So we're proposing this 12-hour car with overtime and that's the ad. Rather than to do all of this by just adding straight up to the budget is, is just over, it would be over a $2 million ask, which I wouldn't, I would know not even to come ask for the $2 million. It's just, it's far too much. And at the same time, by repurposing, we're achieving the goals that we set out to, to achieve.
Well, wait.
Yep.
So go back for a second.
Yes, sir.
There's, there's another change.
Oh, on the, on the map?
Yes.
Okay, so.
In the south.
Yeah. So there's, there's a couple of things that are going on. What, what this deployment plan presupposes is that the station that's here would be moved somewhere along the East Lake-Sam corridor and currently there's land that we're evaluating over there in the city of Issaquah. This was a request from Issaquah, Issaquah when I first arrived. And we are planning, that's actually a good spot in that area for the station. So moving that station helps us cover the area more efficiently. And then the extra dots that you see, including Station 81 is still up there, the one we're repurposing, and then out here in Trossix, those are basically posting locations so that the two aid units, what's not going to happen is those two staffed aid units are not just going to sit in stations along with another fully staffed engine or ladder and just wait for the next call. That, we're not spreading out our resources then. We have to dynamically deploy those based on call volume trends, based on the areas we need to cover. So, and with two B Cs out there, we're going to be able to cover and monitor our larger areas on a more regular basis, more effectively. So we're going to be moving our resources around.
So I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
My house is one of the now little red dots just to the east of Forest Rim.
Okay.
That, that is on your map. It used, it, it until now was a green dot.
Yep.
So will I pay higher homeowner's insurance because I'm a red dot, not a green dot?
No. In this, in the city of Issaquah, you will have the same rating that the city attains, which is currently a four. So no, you, you should not. And if, if you do, give me a call. We'll, we'll talk to the insurance companies for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions right now? Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of detail underneath all these dots.
Oh, well, under the dots, yeah, probably. Yeah.
So I guess, so when you say repurposing 81, meaning what, what is that? Station, a couple of things here. And then, then as, as you say, there's dynamic locations, there's not something there now that means you have to create something or what?
No. What it means, so Station 81, we're actually going to, we're going to post that 12-hour unit. When they're not doing anything else, then they're going to cover from Station 281. Okay? So that's, that's what we mean by repurposing. Rather than being 24 hours a day with an engine company in there that's underutilized, we're going to put a 12-hour aid unit in there with a two-person aid unit. And they're going to still support all the urban area as they do today. The other area is, is no, there, we're not planning on building any new facilities. It will be overtime. Where's the best place to post? Where do we move? We know we need to cover some area in the Trossix and we know South Cove depending on call volume. Again, I think, I want to say this is three years worth of data. So don't think that, like South Cove, that we're never getting to any of the calls there. This is just, it's either three or five years that we piled on this map. So there's a lot to cover there, but we'll dynamically deploy them simply by going to a parking lot if need be. If we know during that time of day, we normally get a call in South Cove. And some of this stuff is predictable. But we're, until we can have these smaller units to respond this way, we can't perfect the science of how to cover the area either. It's just guessing through data. We want to actually get units out there and see how accurate we can be. And it won't take long, but then we'll know where the best places to post are. But we know now, I've committed to the city of Samamish, that we'll be posting at Station 81 whenever we can with that unit in order to, to do everything we can to maintain the services there. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. And then in community programs, I cited community programs just to let you know some of the great work that we're doing with our volunteer. Our volunteer program over the last two years has completely been revamped and is moving forward. And it's thanks to a, a lot of great work from staff and our volunteer folks. Fire Corps has expanded. These are, this is anything volunteer-wise that has not, nothing to do with responding on actual fires. All right? These are, these are our volunteers who are, the new drone program that we just started with, thanks to the donation from the EMS Foundation. They're running that. They, Fire Corps was all over salmon days this last weekend. They were, they were doing everything in support. Our Fire Explorer program kicks off, actually it's kicking off, I think it's Wednesday night. I'll be kicking off with 20 or 30 young people from the, from high school. And then, and our reserves, which was our old volunteer program, you'll see that there was an increase in the academy and then the stipends. This is all being shared with District 38 and District 10. EFER is a 33% partner in the volunteer costs when it comes to this stuff. And then the public education supply increase is just that, just to have materials to hand out because we're, we are more visible than what we've ever been and in more, more events than what we have been. And then some of the other budget items that we went into more depth with, you can see here, one of the things I want to call out is wildland preparedness. This, this scares me, the, the drier we're getting. 100% of our firefighters will receive wildland training and we'll maintain that beginning next year. That has not been the case here in the past. And we have as much interface as anyone in the country. We're just lucky it's been wet and hopefully it stays that way. But we're going to be prepared if not. And then the rest of the command training platform is a, is a big move. We do not have a standard command training platform, never have, at Eastside. And this is something, frankly, we just, we need to be covering our liability and training our folks appropriately and systematically. And that's what that system does for us.
Chief, can I ask you a couple of questions around that wildland preparedness?
Yes, sir.
So it's cost neutral. So who's, who's paying the bill?
Yeah. So, so the reason we call that cost neutral is we bumped some other training priorities that we normally would do and we slid it in next year as this is our focus. So we're using our existing training budget to handle the, the new priority of wildland. And we bumped out what otherwise we thought could wait a year. And we'll take care of that in 2020. That's why we're calling it cost neutral.
I'm really glad to see that we're doing that. I think that you just have to look at what happened to Wenatchee three years ago.
Yes.
And recognize that the, the then state fire marshal told me Issaquah was sort of the poster child of wildland urban interface fires risk on the west of the Cascades because of all of our, because of all, all of our beautiful mountainside around us.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm really glad to, glad to hear that. Are we doing anything with Firewise, the program to help homeowners sort of ruggedize their properties?
Yes.
Against, against wildland fires?
Yeah. We are, we, we actually just had a, our community preparedness B C was back in Emmitsburg, Maryland where the Fire Academy is. And he was getting some overview on that. He has some Firewise training. You're going to see it start to roll out a little bit more. I think the hard part with Firewise is you have to get people's attention in order for them to participate that, hey, it's a possibility. I think we're, based on the, the inquiries that we received the last couple of years, I think the attention is starting to get to folks that, hey, maybe this is a possibility here. And that, once we can grab hold with the public, their imagination a little bit that, hey, maybe this stuff can happen here, the prevention can start to come around. But you will see a focus on that. We do have a focus on it. It's just hard to get it going because a lot of people just don't believe it can happen here.
Sure. And I think, I mean, you mentioned Squawk. Two of the seven of us are on Squawk.
Yep.
And, you know, as beautiful it is and as proud as we are of the canopy that we have and, and living in the forest, you know, my property is not ready for any kind of anything running along the ground. So.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think whatever we can do as a community to understand that risk would be good. The other question I have for you is in terms of large-scale emergency preparedness, I know that the Cascadia Rising didn't, I don't think it came all the way down to the, like, EFER level, did it?
No, we did, we did participate in Cascadia Rising, yes.
Okay. So, so EFER has plans around those, those sorts of, like a subduction fault event and, and the emergencies that would potentially arise from a subduction fault?
Yeah. I think how I would categorize it is we're, we are folded in with everybody that we serve and we fold into your plan. As the jurisdiction, you're actually the one responsible to have a plan and then we support that. Same with the county and the state. So we'll obviously be involved and then we take care of, we take part of the planning processes for all of that. Unlike a traditional city fire department, we don't have a formal role because we went through this with Samamish, is the authority having jurisdiction is you, the city, not me, the contractor. me, the contracted fire provider. We are here in full support, and we work with your folks on staff, but you're the lead, and then we follow with it. And so our plan is really your plan when it comes to questions specific to that.
Got it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions right now?
Okay, we're almost through this. The last thing I have is the Funding Formula Refresh. I wanted to let you know where we're at. I explained this a little bit, that in 2015, the contract was agreed to, it was actually, so it would have been prior to January 1st, 2015, that the contract was agreed to, and the Funding Formula is broken down with the 8515. That was new to the agency at the time. What you agreed to back then was that in May of 2018, that the numbers would be reapplied based on the 2017 CSSE valuation and the 2016 NORCOM incident data. Now, moving forward, when we signed the contract extension last year, we extended the contract to 2026, and we planned to have automatic 10-year renewals in that contract, and then we planned that every two years, that there would be this data refresh, rather than waiting three, four, and five years, which is why, right now, specifically Issaquah North Bend, you have kind of a shock when it comes to the amount that we're asking for an increase, because it's so many years in between. So, but right now, the next refresh is 2022. So in 2022, we can't predict that it'll again be Issaquah North Bend, but there are going to be some partners who are going to see an increase, and some partners who are going to see a decrease, as far as whatever the increase to the budget's going to be. It's not going to be uniform like it typically is. So one of the things that we did is we, staff proposed a couple of options, we were asked to after the first FAC meeting, on how we might smooth this. And this example here is what's going to be considered under a separate action on Thursday night, is a Funding Formula Smooth, which this, there's language that accompanies this in our financial policy that the Board of Directors adopts, which basically, the quick summary on this says that any, no partner could have more than a 1.5% increase above whatever the EFOR increase is. So in this case, our increase is 3.63%, okay, from 2019. There is a typo, the 5.46 up under bullet number two there, that was from an old version, that really should be 5.13% for this version. But since we, our budget settled at a 3.63% increase, what the Smooth says is that no agency can be billed more than 1.5% above the 3.63, which caps North Bend and Issaquah for this year at 5.13%. The remainder of what otherwise would have been covered by those two entities is spread out based on the Funding Formula to the other three partners. Then in the second year, it repeats, and you kind of play catch-up, and you'll see that Issaquah gets smoothed out, but North Bend doesn't quite make it, all right? But in two and a half years roughly, North Bend will make it. What this does is limit the, what could have been easily a 10 or a 9, 9% or 10% increase for you in North Bend, it limits to whatever partner gets affected from the Funding Formula Refresh to just 1.5%, which is a little bit more realistic and manageable. From a North Bend perspective, I know just in speaking to their city manager, she was looking at a 7.82, and I want to say that our first rendition was over 8%. For her budget and that size, that was almost completely undoable. She was a little bit panicked, and she actually requested that we look at this. So the FAC has recommended that this be approved. I've talked to a couple of the governing bodies that had questions about this as a whole. I do believe there is support for this now, moving forward, we'll see for sure on Thursday night. But this was at the pleasure of the FAC to figure out a way how to smooth it in for partners. Now, if adopted the way it's presented, this will be in effect for 2022 as well. I expect 2022 to be bad for somebody, just don't know who. After that, when it goes to every two years, this probably won't have to apply again, because it should, you shouldn't have a radical change in A V or call volume over a two-year period. But over a four-year period, you're going to see some significant changes, so. But that's the last slide. I'll be happy to answer any more questions you have.
Councilmember Good.
I don't have any, but I do have a comment. First of all, thank you for bringing your roadshow to Issaquah. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So Councilmember Ray and I are the city's representatives on the East Side Fire and Rescue Board, and as Chief Clark mentioned, we will be, as the full board, will be seeing the budget and considering the budget. And so councilmembers who have any feedback on what's been presented tonight, that would be helpful for us. As you heard, the Finance and Administration Committee, that I happen to be on, recommended bringing his proposal to the full board, but we do still have to take our votes. So any feedback that you all have would be appreciated, and we, are we going to see it twice or once, the budget?
This is the second time, because we counted the June as the first one, so yeah.
So yes.
Mm-hmm.
So anything before Thursday would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I think that's it, Chief.
All right.
And, oh, yeah, thank you so much for presenting. We will offer it up if there's any public comment this evening on this subject.
Thanks again, Chief.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Takes me back to when we had a Public Safety Committee, and they wouldn't let me in land use or near the roads, so they got me in Public Safety. We had police and fire. We kept our fire depart, we kept our police department as City of Issaquah, and was glad we moved over to Regional Fire, and hear great things, different employees, and everybody seems quite happy with what's going on, and I know very positive from councilmembers and mayors as well. So keep it up. Wildland issue is a big concern. We had four, we had five example, five homeless camps over on the city property over there across I-90, and we had one fire in a very, but it didn't get very big, or they didn't even find it, actually. It got put out, but it was visible from I-90, and there were calls and that. But I've been to lots and lots of homeless camps, and I've hardly ever seen one where there wasn't evidence of burned tarps, burned tents, or out-of-control fires. And that's something we really need to think about, not that that's the only potential cause of fires, but it, once something starts racing up some of these hillsides, especially where you don't have water, don't have roads, it's pretty frightening, and these hillsides are too valuable to lose. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Actually, Chief, I did have one last question for you, and I wrote it down, and I don't know why I didn't ask you when, and it actually does come back to the wildfire question. So I know that last year, there was a concerted effort to, or I should say, the beginning of the effort, to sort of reassess how the federal government supports growth of, in National Forest Service land and whatnot, and no, part of that was Senator Cantwell and Representative Reichert pushed a bill, and I don't remember which particular kinds of trees it was, but it was a, and it was a dry-side thing, like, it was a thing that was great for the other side of the pass, wouldn't necessarily do anything on our side. But the question is, is there anything that folks on the wet side of the pass should be doing? I mean, we rarely talk about federal issues around here, because they don't generally affect our city all that much, but I don't know how much you know about that effort that Cantwell and Reichert did, but is there something similar that should be done on this side to help sort of revise how the feds handle these open spaces?
It's a great question. I really don't know the answer to it. I'm not familiar with the effort that was made. There, a large controversy in the country, of course, is what we do to manage our forests, and there's pros and cons on both sides, and there are often bills at the federal level, and some of the state levels, to come up with policy on that. The best policy locally is keeping the brush and the floor of the forest as clean as possible around your structures. There's not much you're going to do with the tall trees.
So it's interesting, Washington State over the last five years is number two in per-square-mile wildfire burns, like, uncontrolled wildfire burns, and we're like number 35 in controlled burns. So we, in no way, like, Georgia's number one for controlled burns, and it's up there for uncontrolled burns, but, you know, we just, we are totally out of whack for how much damage wildfires do in our state versus how much controlled burns we do, and I don't know enough, I know it's a bigger deal on the dry side than it is on the wet side, but I know that, you know, I know that there's a lot of conversation about what should be done to manage things such that we're not number two, you know, for wildfire.
So what I can do is, EFOR will be building our legislative agenda between now and December, so I will research that locally and bring that back to the board to see if there is anything within our state that would impact locally, that is either being worked on or may, perhaps we should be working on. I can reach out to some of the agencies to find that out.
I suspect it's a federal issue, not, that it's an issue for DC, not an issue for Olympia, but...
Either way, it'll come across in the research, so I'll be sure to take a look at it.
Like I said, I think for our city, you know, it's keenly important that we reduce that, that risk.
I would agree.
Thanks. Thanks for taking one last, you thought you were done. All right, and with that, any other final thoughts? Nope. All right, so we will move on to our last item of the evening, ID 0334, Regional Coalition for Housing, AKA ARCH, parity update. Back to City Administrator Moon.
Thank you. Hopefully, this will be relatively quick. Find my pager, sorry. So the city is a member of the ARCH group, which is an acronym for Regional Housing Coalition. This is a group of 15 cities on the east side, King County, and this coalition formed in the early 90s to support the development of affordable housing. The organization's executive board, way back when, established some advisory goals, that's really important, voluntary goals, for each member's financial contribution to the coalition, and in particular, to the coalition's Housing Trust Fund. There are two ways that cities that are partners in ARCH contribute to ARCH. One is through an administrative fee that serves as the overhead contribution for the organization. So we pay for the staff and the electricity in the offices and all those sorts of things. Our contribution for the admin fee is roughly $50,000 a year. And then the second piece that the coalition members contribute to is to the Housing Trust Fund. The overall Housing Trust Fund has made contributions to affordable housing on the east side to the tune of $65 million since the point in time when ARCH was established, created over 3,648 units. We benefit from contributing to the ARCH Housing Trust Fund because our funds go into a larger pot with the other 14 members, and leverage funds to create housing units here and elsewhere on the east side. And we also benefit from that dedicated housing staff that are truly subject matter experts, more so than staff most of our cities have in-house. Those experts are not only good resources for us in terms of figuring out how to do the financing on these deals, but also on land use and regulation, on management of these types of projects, programs, and financing tools, and then also on housing policy. So that's how we benefit from ARCH. Tonight, I wanted to bring forward three questions. So the executive board, on which I serve as Issaquah's representative, recently took action after two years of work on a set of questions, and the board in early 2018 made a recommendation that we update what we call the parity goals, and parity is a formula that we use to describe the distribution of the contributions. And again, those are voluntary contributions to the Housing Trust Fund. So in mid-'90s, a formula was established to describe what member contributions might be, and that formula has really not been adopted, been adjusted over time to bring in current housing statistics, population statistics, employment statistics. The formula has remained the same, but the inputs to the formula were not adjusted. And so as a result, the Housing Trust Fund contribution has remained fairly static, and its leverage power, therefore, has diminished, and the number of units that we're able to afford to construct has been affected, because, as we all know, it's more expensive to build houses now than it was two decades ago. So tonight, I'm bringing forward the executive board's recommendation to update the parity formula. We refer to this as the technical update. I'm also bringing forward a second ask from the executive board, and that's just to take the temperature on whether or not you believe the time is right for the ARCH board to begin a conversation with member communities about setting an aspirational goal for the Housing Trust Fund. So in the mid-'90s, the goal that was established, was established really because cities said, here's how much I would like to contribute, and how much was generated out of applying the parity formula, and that garners about $1.5 million per year of contribution that's used to leverage these projects. 1.5 does not go as far as it used to, and so the board, along with elected officials from member communities, have met over the last two years and have begun a conversation about, is that still the right number for us, 1.5 million dollars, or do we want to set a different type of goal? Do we want to base that goal on the number of housing units we'd like to create? Do we want to base it on the, what we call the sweet spot, which is a target range that we think does the best to leverage other funds? And so the board has asked us to go and shop that question with all of our member city councils, and to ask, would you be interested in us starting a conversation throughout the coalition about a new aspirational goal for the Housing Trust Fund? So I've given you a packet that lays out the technical adjustment recommendation, that is just an adjustment to the formula itself. It would bring it up to today's housing employment numbers for each member city, and establish a new target range, that's both a min and a max. In the case of the City of Issaquah, we are currently in the 2018 budget, contributing a number that's just below what would be the new min. The anticipated proposed budget for 2019 from the mayor will include a recommendation to raise our voluntary minimum contribution to the trust fund to the new minimum, roughly. We will discuss that during budget deliberations. So tonight, really, I'm seeking some feedback on whether or not you agree with the board's recommendation to adjust the parity formula for housing and employment numbers, population numbers that are consistent with really what is occurring in cities today, and also an inflationary factor that would be applied on a more regular basis, so that the formula keeps pace with growth and with inflation. And then, secondly, asking if you are also interested in member cities in the coalition having a conversation about setting a more aspirational goal. Over the next two months, we will talk about budget contribution to the Housing Trust Fund as part of budget deliberations. Yes?
Yes, yes, maybe.
Yes, yes, maybe.
Yes, on adjusting to reflect where the reality is today, yes, on an inflation bogey, no idea what to say about aspirational, because I just have no idea, and I think you and I have talked a little bit about it, to me, it has to do with, how does that compare to our historical numbers? Are there ways to contribute to that with, you know, in-kind contributions? How does it, this aspirational target, how does it compare to, and I know some of this, a lot of this, the answers are going to come back at budget time, but I just want to be clear what my thinking is. You know, what does this represent in terms of, you know, a change in operational tempo for ARCH? And also, you know, the challenge that I see with some of the other efforts that are ongoing right now... to address low-income housing and homelessness and what this would do, you know, we, just a few years ago, we were very excited because we got to $10 per person in human services funding, right? And so, as I think about that, I think about where we might be in terms of what we're asking from our residents if we did, if we did a big lift for this and we did a big lift on whatever was coming out of, out of other mechanisms. And so, these are all some of the, some of the concerns I have that lead me to say maybe on the, on the aspirational piece. But other thoughts?
Council President Martz, you refreshed my memory that I meant to also ensure that council members and community members understand that the voluntary target for the housing trust fund is not only able to be satisfied, if that was our goal, with cash, so general fund contribution, but also through land dedication, waiver of fees, a variety of means.
Other people's thoughts?
I have one, I'm sorry. One comment, it's about the escalation, the adjusting. And so, it's just some clarity around if we're talking about adjusting that based on consumer price index, or we're talking about adjusting it based on the high prices of housing and that, how that changes.
CPIW, so based on sort of wage rate inflation.
Super, thanks.
Yep.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Hunt?
You mentioned the need to understand the sweet spot, and there's some information about that also in the memo. So, how, how will the coalition go about understanding what is that best target level to leverage other funds, et cetera?
Sure. So, the executive board and the elected official representatives from each community have met three times over the last two years and have had a more robust conversation about what is the sweet spot. There are probably a handful of different ways that we could go about taking that conversation forward. What I would envision as a board member is we'll collect this feedback from member communities over the next two months about, you know, whether it's a yes, a maybe, or a no, about feeling comfortable with ARCH engaging in, in subsequent discussions about a aspirational goal. And then, we may decide that that's too difficult of a conversation to do in 15 cities simultaneously. And so, perhaps we will convene a group of elected officials and board members to come up with some recommendations to then take back out to communities. I think that probably is going to be the most effective way to do it.
Okay. So, would the idea be then, if councils were interested in, in an aspirational goal, that aspirational goal would be set by whatever the sweet spot level is that is decided through conversation?
I would anticipate that if the feedback from member councils is, yes, we're interested in having a conversation about setting a more aspirational goal, that that committee would then come up with some recommendations. It may involve a recommendation that says we should set an overall contribution target for all the cities collectively that's within the sweet spot. That's one possibility. Or it might be, we think that PSRC has indicated we need to create X number of units over the next decade, and so, we're going to set our coalition's goal as some fraction of that per year. So, I don't know what, what those recommendations would end up being. One possibility is that it would be relative to the sweet spot.
Councilmember Ramos?
Just to get into the weeds a little bit here, ARCH has done great work over the last couple of decades, for sure. I'm, I'm, a couple of questions on predominantly, the work they do is building new affordable housing units. They've taken over some, or they've done some other things, but that's majority of what they do. And as times now, to my mind, are changing a bit in that model, building new affordable housing is the most expensive way to get there, and that model is never going to catch up with the, the reality on the road. So, how, I'm interested in how ARCH would also start looking at other ways of doing things.
Sure.
I'm very concerned about preventing the loss of affordable housing that already exists.
Yes.
And those kinds of things that could be done in, in other ways of doing things that, more models, more new things to look at other than the standard, because that's, we're, we're losing faster than we're gaining, and that's, that's a model set for failure in the long haul. So, I want to make sure we're starting to look at broadening the scope and opportunities and alternatives that ARCH looks at, because I think that's very important in the long haul of getting, and even also things like for sale units, as well as rental units. And they say, taking over some units that could be on the verge of being lost from being affordable and converted to something else, or redevelop, those kinds of things to, to stop that, that loss, which is, I think, the only way we're going to get a handle on this.
Absolutely. And so, the trust fund can be used to preserve housing, and in fact, has on, on many occasions. And then, it's not just new construction, and sometimes it's land to preserve opportunities for new construction. Sometimes it's preservation. The coalition also has a separate program around down payment assistance. So, there are a variety of activities that support either the creation, the preservation, or of affordable housing, or the ability of people to access and remain in affordable housing.
And I went on for a while, but I'm just, I'm just hoping, my encouragement is that, I, I know they've done a little bit of all of that in the past.
Yes.
I would like to encourage to, to look at those things even more so in a broader sense, away from the, the most expensive way of, which is building new.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also have some Issaquah statistics. These would be of help as well. Our City of Issaquah general fund contribution from 2000 to 2017, 2000 is the first year we made such a contribution, have equaled $960,000. Our total contribution to the housing trust fund, again, you add the 960 cash to all the land dedication, et cetera, has been $8.6 million. 6.5 of that was probably related to the YWCA in the Highlands, so vast majority of it. And the total amount of development costs that that supported, so the value at that point in time when it was constructed, is $146 million. So, our cash contribution, 960. The value of that development, 146 million. And the total ARCH trust fund value invested in City of Issaquah projects, sorry, that other number was development value. So, the total value that ARCH contributed to projects that occurred in Issaquah was $15 million. So, we put in 960 in cash, 8.6 total fee waiver, land dedication, et cetera, and we got $15 million out of the ARCH trust fund. That also included other member city contributions to projects that occurred in Issaquah. And that led to the creation of 457 units and six beds in a group home. So, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty phenomenal return on investment.
Other questions from council? Do you have more material you want to present?
That's, that's it. So, just looking for if there are any other thoughts on, shall we, shall we tell the rest of the ARCH board and other communities that, yes, we're going to support this technical update to the parity formula? And then, any other thoughts on whether now is a good time to continue a conversation about setting an aspirational goal for the trust fund? And if the answer is yes to the first on the technical update, then I'm going to prepare a very brief resolution that looks like an endorsement of the formula, and we'll bring that forward for council consideration.
Am I yes on the technical update?
What's that?
I would, yes. I, I see the value of the technical update. Good. Thank you.
I'm seeing some other head nods. Councilmember Goodman?
Would the resolution be in advance of the budget?
I, I would try to get it prepared just as soon as possible. So, I would anticipate it would come forward, be acted upon before adoption of the budget. I think there's not a direct relationship there. It's, again, voluntary targets. We get to decide on an annual basis how much we want to put in our budget for our contribution. So, I don't think they need to be linked.
All right. Thanks. Then I agree with the technical. Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Ramos?
And I'm there too. On the aspirational side, the other thing I'd throw out, there, there is, you know, a lot of talk going on and a lot of other things happening in King County in, in this regard for a lot of things as well. So, I would, when we start getting into more detail of that, I'd like to definitely see how those are connecting with these other programs to, to be most efficient and how that, that could tie. Again, you talk about sweet spot, get some, you know, some synergism that gets things going and really has good payoff because of some things working together. So, I think that'd be a thing that has to tie into that aspirational side.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Anything else you're looking for from us?
I have a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Hunt?
Thanks. So, I was looking at the parity summary chart that was in your presentation.
Yes.
And it looks like there are occasionally years with really high local investment in affordable housing by year in that chart. And then, so there are occasional peaks. And I wondered about the efficiency, or if you could speak to that, why it happens, and also, it seems like the, having an aspirational goal would be, have, what the relationship, I guess, would be to this sort of peaking that's already, that we're already seeing over time.
Sure. And are you looking at sort of the historical charts?
I'm looking at specifically page 40 of 70. It's attachment three parity summary chart. It has annual support for affordable housing, and there's two really notable yeses. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So, the other ends up being fee waivers and land dedication largely. Occasionally, there are other grants that are given to projects. The CDBG is each city's or the whole coalition's community development block grant that we get from federal government. It's allocated through population and census information to each municipality. All the municipalities in ARCH aggregate that money, and, and ARCH is the recipient of our CDBG money. And then, it's allocated back out to projects. And then, general fund contributions is just what we talked about. It's the cash contribution from each city. So, the green does. The other sources of funding definitely fluctuates. It's dependent on what type of project is being pursued, or what each community decides on a given year to contribute. There are spikes because, there, there are even spikes that we have been seeing in just the last year. You can see 2017, and I'm anticipating it for 2018. There were some sizable cash contributions from municipalities who decided this was their top priority issue, affordable housing. And they, they decided to take general fund balance and make sizable contributions to the housing trust fund. So, we do see spikes from time to time for a variety of reasons. And I think any change to the parity formula is not going to change that, that pattern. And on that, and the aspirational goal, the aspirational goal would just be that. It would, it would help set a new target for the organization. So, right now, the aspirational goal is that $1.5 million like it was from 1996. That became the basis for the parity formula. Now, we would need to discuss, do we want to set a new target? Whether or not we actually achieve that target each year is going to be up to individual cities in terms of their cash contribution or other contributions. Great. Thank you.
All right. With that, then, any closing comments from anybody? Nobody in the, nobody from the public has chosen to stay with us. Councilmember Hunt?
I, I would like more information about how, if, if the aspirational goal were to be the direction of ARCH, how that would be decided, just because I feel like it's, I would like more information to know.
Okay. Very good. And I'd be happy to provide that. I think over the next couple of months, we're trying to get this input from member cities. So, I would imagine that, say in January, the board will be able to kind of report back out to all member cities about what we heard and what we're going to do.
All right. And any other closing thoughts? All right. Thank you, City Administrator Moon. With that, we are adjourned.